About 5:30, we'll call the meeting of the Ramsey County Commission to order. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining and thank you those online. First item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes.
I will move.
I will second.
We have a motion second to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Any additions or updates to the agenda? Any thing that anybody would like to see?
I will move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Tyler and Aaron, are you both there?
Yes, I am there.
Perfect. Well, I'd like to welcome you both to the Ramsey County Commission meeting. I had asked for those in attendance and online and those in the room, asked Aaron and Tyler to come and talk to us, what, share their knowledge with the county about floodplain management and our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. Tyler is the state flood, um, National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator with the state, correct?
Yes, that is correct, sir.
And Aaron is the Director of the Regulatory Department for the Department of Water Resources. So, I'd like to welcome you both. So kind of following up with our discussion that the two of us, three of us had together along with Chris Jaeger, our Emergency Management Director, just talking about the letter that the county had received from FEMA asking about land use authority and, uh, and what was it? The participation in the National Flood Insurance Program? I think you're both aware of that letter, correct?
Yes.
And from my understanding, other counties, other townships, other municipalities across the state are receiving these?
Yes, that is correct. There were two other counties that received it the same time Ramsey County did. And there are additional counties that are receiving it here this spring.
Okay.
It is focused on counties at this time.
So, Aaron, if you want to talk a little bit about the, um, what that letter meant and some of the expectations that FEMA has of the county? If you want to share your expertise and knowledge?
Yeah, absolutely. If it's okay, I'll share it real quick. It's not a presentation in name only, but just a couple of slides, kind of showing what is, uh, where things are and a little bit of the why. So, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So again, this is the FEMA time for the study. And just a little bit of background, um, the, the what, as was mentioned, this is related to the National Flood Insurance Program in North Dakota. And as the first bullet point notes, the National Flood Insurance Program must be applied by the land use authority entity in an area of the state. So in North Dakota, that could be either a city or municipality, a county, or an organized township, also termed a civil township. And now where this gets tricky in North Dakota's case is that organized townships are a rather unique concept to FEMA and the nation as a whole. So, the why now, um, what spurred this study is that there is a change to the status quo recently in 2022. So, in the rest of the country, land use management is between the city or municipality and the county. It's either or, there isn't a third township-like entity in most states. However, in North Dakota, we have townships. And so, the longest time since North Dakota was part of the National Flood Insurance Program, it actually was applying the, or looking at flood insurance policies in North Dakota at that same city or county jurisdictional level and not necessarily taking into account the township authority. And so, why this is important is that if a township is organized, then the township is the one that has land use authority for zoning, uh, you know, development idea, development. And the county is not the authority unless the township has given that authority to the county through agreement. So, where this started is that there were three National Flood Insurance Policy Claims that were submitted and reviewed. And in 2022, FEMA basically changed their status quo and recognized for the first time, uh, North Dakota's unique nature of townships having a, a, a third level of zoning authority. And because the three National Flood Insurance Policies, uh, that were submitted were in townships that did not participate in the National Flood Insurance Program and those townships did not have agreements with the counties to manage the, the land use authority on its behalf, uh, those policies were denied. And so, what that means is now the, so as added with all of that, FEMA realized that there are more than three of these type policies in the state. And I think, uh, there were over 90 that they identified as being potentially suspect, the policies themselves as being incorrectly written to the incorrect zoning authority or land use management authority entity. So FEMA on its own, with its own dollars, is conducting a statewide study of any, uh, any county that has or is willing to have, uh, township responsibilities, uh, granted to it through agreement. And so, we are aware of many counties throughout the state that already have these agreements where the county is administering land use authority from the perspective of National Flood Insurance Program land use management on behalf of townships through agreements. We're also aware that there are many counties that want nothing to do with this type of authority. So FEMA right now is just a data collection exercise. Which counties can do it or want to do it or are doing it and which counties do not? And then from that, uh, we will then look at next steps as it relates to any policies that are denoted as being applied to a county but are in a township that is a civil township or otherwise an organized township. And so, just as a platform of reference, this, uh, this map is, there's a lot going on. But essentially, anything you see that is red with, uh, I guess, let's see here, red or green with cross hatching in it, those are all the civil or organized townships within the state that we are aware of. And again, we get our information from the county auditor's office. And those all, any of those areas would have their own land use authority requirements that would supersede or be in addition to county oversight unless those township has, townships have given that authority to the county through agreement. The areas in blue are those areas where we know a floodplain exists that had been identified by FEMA. So if you see an area that is blue and green, that means the township participates and there is a floodplain present. If it's blue and red, which is in most areas, that exists, that means that there's a floodplain present according to FEMA and the township itself does not participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So, this is just kind of showing the scale of what could be out there. And again, what FEMA is looking to do is just get a status quo, what's, what's on the ground now via agreement? And how do we then best prepare ourselves through FEMA state in partnership with the local communities to, to address those areas, to make sure that the townships are well aware of where they stand in this, in this matter? And if counties are willing to, to step in and take some of this oversight or regulatory burden on behalf of the township, making sure we put the different entities in, in communication with each other with partnership with the state to make sure we can find a resolution that, uh, provides coverage as needed throughout the state for, for insurance holders. So I guess with that, that is, again, just a high level overview of what, where we come, why we are here. And I guess we can answer any questions related to the study, the township issue, or anything else that may come up.
Aaron, would it be possible to get you to email that to me? And so I can share it with the other commissioners? And that map is...
The presentation?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, so that, that, yep, so that, that map does show, uh, areas that, you know, I guess that we have, we're aware of civil townships and based upon what the counties have given to the state. It may not necessarily be every organized township it, because, you know, some counties are better at tracking their information than others. But there is a disclaimer on that map, but we certainly can get you that presentation, um, so it can be shared. Again, it's, it's what we know of as right now, but it may not be the full picture of what's actually out there. That's part of why there's disclaimer on the map.
Do we have any of that in place now?
Any of the land use authority from townships? Yes, I think, uh, Candy had sent out a, a list of townships that have, there's 15 of them?
Twelve, twelve would fall under accounting and two or three cities or something.
So that, that's something that we could probably maybe send out a, an email to our, our township supervisors or our township boards and just see if they've, and if they have any record of, of relinquishing that or authorizing us to have that. You know, I don't know if the list has changed over the years. Certainly, there's some townships that do their own. And there's others that, uh, have asked the county to do. And so Lee, you have that, that list there.
So there's 12 counties and three cities.
12 counties and, and three cities that currently have...
Well, they have adopted the county. So I assume that they have adopted that. You know, but if we're running, if we're running the flood management, those counties would be under our control.
Are you able to hear that okay, Aaron? You may have to speak up.
I just cut it, uh, bit of it.
So there's, there's 12 counties in the, or 12 townships in the county that have adopted the county as their zoning authority? And three cities? So I would think that that would fall under our jurisdiction. There's four townships and three cities that have no record of any kind of zoning. So I always think that they don't have any floodplain managers at all then.
So it is our understanding that as long as, you know, Ramsey County is, has a, you know, a floodplain administrator identified and is issuing floodplain development permits and managing land use with that perspective, with a zoning ordinance that is current and approved by FEMA in their participation, that those 12 townships and three cities that have, you know, their authority to the county, anyone within those political boundaries would be able to purchase flood insurance. Now that is our understanding. And again, that's, that is the exact goal of this study, is to understand where those boundaries are. Just knowing over time, some of those understanding may have been, may, may have been reported and some of them may have been, you know, it, it was known that it existed, but no one actually had documentation of what that may or may not have been. So, but yeah, those, those 12 and three that, that had done that would be covered. It might as well understand the four and three that have not would likely fall outside of the, of the ability to, to purchase flood insurance underneath the county's, um, participation.
So Aaron or Tyler, do either one of you know what the expectations of, of what FEMA is looking for from a county or from a township to? You have this type of authority?
Yeah, you know, I think it varies quite a bit. FEMA hasn't really been questioning what, uh, what counties or townships have for an agreement. They're just trying to see what there is. And so it's, I think it's pretty wide open. And I don't think they're, you know, requiring that it be this or it be that. It's, uh, they're just trying to see what is in existence. And I think that's their primary concern at this point.
So Aaron, or, uh, is it Aaron? It is Aaron. You mentioned that, um, whatever ordinance, uh, is on record that it has to be okayed by FEMA? Did I catch that right?
Yes, and Ramsey County is a participating community already. And so their, their ordinance would have already been reviewed and approved by FEMA at the last check-in that FEMA had with the county.
So if the townships have done their own, they would also have to have an ordinance that was okayed by FEMA, correct?
That is correct.
So Aaron, this is Bo Cummings. I'm the state's attorney. I'm over in the corner. I don't know if you can see me. But, uh, so with that in mind, if a township has an ordinance, then in theory, they should be eligible to participate in the National Flood Plane, Flood Insurance Program. Is that correct?
Right, if they are, if they went to the, I guess, the, the joining process to join the National Flood Insurance Program as a community and as part of that is showing the, you know, submitting a land use ordinance, that meets FEMA's and the state's minimum standards, then yes, they would be able to participate separately. And then the people within the township would be able to buy flood insurance through the, through the township's participation.
The only reason I ask that is because we have some, I'll say feisty townships within Ramsey County that like to be a little independent. So it's a, in theory, it's available to them if they go through all the steps, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, yeah, and we, we have a, a number of examples of township that have done just that, where they administer it on the township level, uh, issue permits, review developments, perspectives or considerations. And they do that on their own. But also there is the avenue where they could also join the county. And I guess one of the, one of the, from a state, from a state perspective, you know, making sure that of all townships that have a willingness to, to pursue this that are looking at what options are available to them, making sure that those options are current. But yeah, you're absolutely right. If they want to do it on their own, they definitely have that as an option.
And just to clarify on the legal end for Ramsey County, our ordinance on file, that's our Model C ordinance, is that right? From about 20, 2000, does that sound right?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't have the, uh, the records up. But if that, is that the last, the latest update? The Model C from around 20, a year 2000?
That's what I have. But if you have something more current, I wouldn't mind if you sent it back to me.
I think, unless Tyler can say otherwise, I think we'll double check.
Yeah, it's showing on the community status book that the current effective map date is June of 2001.
So that, that I think is the accompanying firm map that goes with the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, then we're all on the same page. That's all I got, thank you. Sorry for, oh, tip over.
No, thank you for that. Any other questions?
So if the township doesn't want to do it, but they have their own zoning, we need a specific document specifying that they're going to participate under the county's authority to the floodplain, floodplain management specifically?
Yeah, it sounds like some sort of relinquishment. Townships giving it up to the county.
Townships can, if they want to retain the planning and zoning, but they don't want to deal with the floodplain management, they can just relinquish that to the county. It would just have to specify that in the agreement.
So that's, that's what you're looking for? The counties haven't done it on their own. You're looking for those, evidence of those agreements then? Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's what FEMA is going to be looking for. And yeah, it, it's, uh, yes, that's correct.
Do either of you know if Ramsey County has any floodplain or flood, uh, National Flood Insurance, uh, participants? That would be in jeopardy if we didn't have something in place this year? Because is this something that FEMA is looking for for this year, this flooding season?
I can tell you that FEMA is working right now. They just had a meeting, uh, yesterday with representatives at FEMA headquarters regarding, uh, what would happen with existing policies. It's my understanding that no decision has been made at this time. It has been the recommendation from FEMA Region 8, which is our region out of Denver, that, uh, the, whatever, however they would exactly have to do it, I don't know, but they basically would take the community ID and transfer it to that township. If you have someone that's been paying their flood insurance premium in good faith for several years, it would be best if we could just take that community ID and transfer it to that township if they choose to join. Or if there's an agreement that's already in place, where the county is taking that, handling that for the township. But again, no decision has been made on that at this point. We don't know when that decision will be coming. So...
Anybody have anything else they'd like to ask, Aaron or Tyler? And Aaron, do you want to briefly touch on that House Bill 1098 that went through the legislative session this year?
Yeah, so just pull up the document here a second, double check what, um, the exact language is. But yeah, so the Department of Emergency Services put forward, House Bill 1098, the red tape reduction bill on behalf of floodplain management. And so what the bill does is, um, it's, so the current language in state, in state law actually had a higher penalty than the federal government did for those areas that did not participate in the National Flood Insurance Program but had a flood hazard identified. So let's say if the township doesn't participate, they haven't yielded authority to a county, a flood happens, as disaster relief dollars and, and, you know, government declares disaster, they spend it in disaster relief dollars. As those disaster relief dollars get to the county and are to be spent, the, the state actually has currently an ordinance that would say they, that that township or that community would be ineligible for any type of disaster assistance, financial or otherwise, or any other state funds. So right now, and that's, that's a, that's a pretty big shift from where the federal law is. And so what 1098 did is essentially, the way FEMA looks at it is from a disaster relief perspective, that the flood hazard has been identified, it's insurable structures that are, are not eligible for disaster relief dollars, but utilities, um, roads, other, other, uh, community assets would still be able to receive relief dollars, just not those insurable buildings or structures that would have otherwise been able to be covered by the National Flood Insurance Program. So that 1098 essentially unlocked, or removed a, a substantial hurdle as far as disaster relief dollars and getting those in a final to the state that the state had as a highest standard, um, you know, for, for several years. So that did go through and that did get passed, in my understanding.
Okay. Anything else?
The three policies that were denied, were they new policies or policies that were in place that just got denied?
There, uh, I know one specifically was an existing policy where the claim was denied, I believe. Prior claims, and I think it was, uh, 2019 and 2011 claims were paid on that policy. And, um, how it made it through that process then and, and it didn't raise some red flags, but now, or last year in 2022, it did. I, I guess I don't know what happened there, but, uh, yeah. So that's, the other two, I'm not entirely certain if those were also in that same county or if they were elsewhere, I would have to check.
Anybody else? Other questions? I have none from my phone. I had given the people the YouTube link to, to be able to watch. Steve Moore, our IT, nobody else is on Teams? No. And no, no questions? Anybody else? Mr. Cummings? Okay. Well, I want to thank you both for, uh, taking time out of your evenings and joining us this, tonight. Any questions for us?
I think just, again, thank you for the opportunity. And again, as, as this moves forward, I mean, there, it's inevitable to be a lot more questions or considerations or what happens next. And by all means, please reach out to us early and often. You know, we're, we're here to help coordinate and facilitate, make sure that we're all, um, working together to, to find a solution to any of these issues as they arise.
Perfect.
Yes, thank you for the opportunities.
Yeah, thank you, thank you both. I would have, would have preferred if FEMA would have put on their letter, "Study. For study purposes, we are requesting this information." That would have given a lot less heartburn moving forward. But I appreciate you guys clarifying and taking the time out of your evening. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, um, next up on the agenda would be, is it Kevin? The brace, brace. Mr. Crosby. Welcome.
Well, thank you. I just want to give you a few things here first, um, some of the stuff. The first thing I have here, if you would take one and, and pass it around, I guess, is just a thing that I'm working on. It's a little brochure and stuff too. And this, this next group of stuff is some of the stuff that we've been, we're going through when we were, when I was in Washington DC. So I guess I should start that off. I'm here to just kind of address what I, what transpired at the end of February to beginning in March, when I went to Washington DC. I got selected for the American Legion to be on a Veterans Affairs Rehabilitation Commission at Washington DC to address some of our legislators and stuff. So they were kind enough to, to give me some time off for that. So I got to go. And I just wanted to discuss with you some of the things in brief, what transpired and stuff. Yeah, you guys can have this. I didn't, I was not able to appropriate all of, enough materials from them for every, every commissioner here, but I got one set for each of the counties that I work with. So if you want to look at. I think one of the most important documents is probably the one at the bottom there to address is all the different legislative stuff that we were going through there. I want to say I had a wonderful time. I, I flew out and got there Friday, late Friday evening. I flew out on Friday and got there, got into the motel. And then Saturday morning, I basically had the whole day Saturday out. So I got to see all the Smithsonian museums and stuff and, and wander around them all. and stuff and, and, and wandered around the mall. I found out that the tourists don't go out there until about 10 o'clock when the museums open, so from seven till then, I had the whole mall and stuff basically to myself to see all the stuff. I was FaceTiming with my girls and I walked up to the Supreme Court door and knocked on it, so no one answered. Um, so it was a really good time. Sunday morning, I got to go to Arlington Cemetery. The first things I saw there was some, some, um, and I didn't get a video of this, or I tried to, but they were doing like some general orders calling out at the very beginning when they first showed up for the day that I didn't realize they did. But I stayed there for quite a while and actually saw two brief lanes. The first one was for Cub Scouts and the second one was for the Sons of American Legion. I thought that was fate, you know, because I belonged to both of those organizations and stuff, so that was really wonderful too. And then we got to work on Sunday. We met, I met with the other representatives from North Dakota all together. There were Spivey, there was myself, Bernard Lanning, who had been there before, he kind of headed up, made all the appointments with the senators and the representative for us. We had a gentleman from the Legion, Brad Huber, Clarence Carroll, who is our, going to be the next commander of the American Legion from North Dakota. And then we had, um, Kenny Reederholt, who's a, old, had, used to be the commander from North Dakota. So we got through there, we had a meeting together to discuss, you know, uh, our plan of action and stuff and how things were going to roll. They don't get into a lot of it before you get down there, so it was kind of, uh, go in or play as you go, so to speak. So we got in there and I got to, into a meeting with everyone, and there's a lot of role calls, you know, because they, you know, they, they want to make sure that the commission is there and the committee members and stuff, so I had to go through a couple of those. I ended up into one area called Veterans Affairs Administration. If you look through the brochure that I gave you and stuff, you'll see that's breaking up, that some of the teams might be National Security, um, another of the, of the teams might be, um, I think they had, um, employment, veterans employment and rehabilitation and stuff down there too. So I was on the Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, and then subsequently on a subcommittee for Veterans Benefits. So it fell right into the Veteran Service Officer job and stuff. And I noticed when I was in there that there's, you know, different committee members. If those that weren't Veteran Service Officers and stuff, sometimes those old legionnaires would come up and say things that would make it, address issues to the wrong department or the VA. The VA is broken up between the Veterans Benefits Administration, which is myself. I help veterans get disability benefits, GI Bill, stuff like that. And then there's Veterans Health Administration, which handles the medical, the clinic, the hospital, and then finally, uh, the National Cemetery, which is memorial affairs, you know, the monuments that we get for the veterans, and then manages like the new Veteran Cemetery and stuff. So they broke up into different groups. And then with, from there, we get to meet with some of the, the main players or some of the under secretaries and stuff for the VA and discuss what issues are going on within the VA, you know, like, for example, the PACT Act that just came out, which has a huge effect on some of the veterans, because it opened up a lot of areas for our Vietnam veterans, such as Guam and Thailand and Malaysia, to qualify for Asian Orange benefits. And it also opened up things like hypertension, which a lot of veterans getting that age have it, but if they were over in Vietnam and they had the hypertension, guess what? It's presumptive, so I just need to say, yes, you've been diagnosed with this, and, uh, yes, you were over in a region, uh, in Vietnam or one of those other areas, so now you've got a disability. You might not get it, present on it, but at least it's in the books there. And some of that stuff opens up a lot of our veterans that weren't utilizing the Veterans Health Administration, because they couldn't get that disability. So they're going to have to get in there with our priority eight, so either that or they're going to have to pay cost shares and, and copays and stuff too. So it's been increasing here a lot. In fact, I was running here late because I had a gentleman drive all the way from Anata to Lakota. I'm not going to turn him away until I get all his paperwork done and stuff too. So with that, we go through some of the legislative stuff and we listed those things. And then we get back together and we discuss all the things that were brought up in the other subcommittee. So also Veterans Benefits, I got to hear what transpired in the cemetery, because it falls under Veterans Affairs Rehabilitation. So after that, we get together with our North Dakota group and figure out, okay, what was important to us to bring up to our legislators and stuff. So out of the five of us that went, for example, our head guy, he picked up the main issue for our legislators. So we were, the, the next morning, we were off and running to the, to the Representative Kramer's, or Armstrong's office, right away. So we had that go, so we sit down with the staff and then just basically wait for the senator representative to come in and say hi and bye and run out to their next meeting or voting and stuff, so you deal mostly with their staff. And except for Senator, or Senator Hoben's office, the other two offices, their staff are very young folks in there, you know, it's like weird. I think they're mostly volunteers and stuff too, but Senator's Hoben's office, we got one of his key staff guy, he's very knowledgeable. Whenever we brought up a legislative bill or something, he knew right away what was going on with it. Our reception was really good on there. We get a lot of military support from all our political leaders in Washington DC and throughout North Dakota. North Dakota's always been kind to its veterans that, or to the veterans folks around here and stuff too. I think someone had mentioned that North Dakota's trying to be number one in, uh, a state for, for veterans and stuff, and the way they're going, it seems to be going that way, because now we also have, um, uh, tax exemption for our military service members and stuff too, going on within the state, opening a lot more opportunities for us. So some of the legislative stuff that we brought up was the PTSD and suicide, because that was the main thing, uh, on there. And Bernard Lanning, that was kind of his thing. He was the, the guy, he was the old hat guy, so he took on the most important thing that was for the Legion and brought up to the legislators. Another guy we had was Clarence Carroll, and he had been over in Afghanistan and he had worked with interpreters and stuff, so all those Afghanistan interpreters and, and interpreters that were brought over here are sitting here in limbo, um, in basically like a containment area, because they don't have the documentation to get citizenship. You know, you can't go, send a letter to Afghanistan and, hey, can we have your criminal record and your, your passport and military ID? They're kind of in limbo over there, so he brought that up. Another guy from the Navy, Brad Huber, brought up the fact that the Coast Guard guys, when we have, uh, uh, the government goes into default or whatever, because they're not paying, so all the military, because they're essential workers, got paid, but not the Coast Guard guys, because they're not under the Department of Defense. So they're trying to get legislation to change that and make them essential workers. Last time the American Legion footed the bill for those Coast Guard guys that weren't getting paid, and I don't think they wanted to do that anymore, so that was one of their issues, that what they were trying to push. And at the meeting, some Coast Guard retirement, retiring, I was like, no, forget about the retirees. I guess they didn't get paid either, but we didn't even think about that. Another issue that we had, that I had for myself, was, um, the disability payments, a copayment for, um, or not, uh, for the retirement and for the disability. Right now, if you have a, a military disability below 50%, it gets deducted from your retirement pay. So if you work at Halliburton or KBR, the Northrop Grumman, and you do your eight years or 20 years in the service to go work for them, you know, you're still going to get your retirement pay, or your retirement pay from Northrop Grumman, plus you're going to get your disability if you do your military service. But if you do 20 years in the military service and get a disability at that rate, you're going to get deducted. So it's just, you know, that way those, those percentages that are lower will get both. Another thing I had brought up on there was the, uh, National Guard parity. So we have a lot of National Guard Reserve soldiers getting a lot of active duty time. So they would prorate the GI Bill. So if you do, uh, 10 years of service, you would get half the GI Bill allotted to your family. So if you do five and, you know, quarter and so on, so they prorate the GI Bill to get another benefit for all these, uh, National Reserve soldiers doing these continuous active duty deployments. Right now, they're not entitled to that stuff. Another thing I had on there, because I actually had a case like this, was to make the, um, those lawyers that you see on TV for Camp Lejeune, right? Some of them are good, some of them are not. Some of them are, are scam artists, and they're good for some of the civilians and, and, um, civilian contractors and stuff that were over at Camp Lejeune to help them get that benefit, because it wasn't afforded to them. But the veterans were afforded that right through, um, the VA a long time ago, so they could put in for their, they are subjected to Camp Lejeune and get payments. Well, the veterans see that on TV and they call the lawyer, and I had one, and he had his case easy. He was going to get that done after the, the last, um, the add-on with the cancer, through, you know, we're just waiting. But he called the lawyer, and as soon as you do that, um, I cannot work on your case anymore, because you have a legal representative. Farber can't work on your case anymore. Oh, and by the way, that lawyer, the legal company now charged him $1,000 a month for basically having him, just call him one night, you know, when he wasn't in the right state of mind. But there's, and yeah, the government can't, has, because those lawyers aren't, um, accredited BSOs, they can't go against them, and so they're trying to change that right now. But, and keep in mind, those lawyers are still needed for those civilians and contractors who are at Camp Lejeune, but there are some out there that are taking advantage of the system. And there are some other things out there too, where some of the veterans get scammed like that too. So we have legislation out there to try to get that resolved, so they be held accountable. So we go to all these offices and we try to pitch. I found out I'm a lobbyist. I know that's kind of sad. So I did my lobbying and stuff on there, and, you know, they listen and nod their head and stuff, and, but, you know, I find when all these bills and stuff come out there, if they really, really, really support that bill, then they need to co-sponsor it, you know? So they keep giving you lip service, but if they have a co-sponsor on the bill, then, you know, they're up for it and stuff too. And a lot of times we'll have stuff in the military that has bipartisan support, but it's, it's fiscally heavily, heavy on the DoD budget. So, you know, it might go through the committee, it might get bipartisan support, but then the chairman, they have a lot of power. If they feel like they don't want to bring that up for a vote, it can sit back and then it has to wait till next year to get up for a vote again. So those, those heads of those, uh, the Senate and, and representative chambers have a lot of power with them too. So we got to keep up with that and make sure that not only do our representatives support it, we got to make sure that the bill gets out there and then it's voted on, you know, and kept up on. So I have homework now for a while until I can track and see all of our major issues get addressed and then, uh, voted for by our representatives. And I think for us on the North Dakota side, we have really, again, I can't reiterate the, how fortunate we have, such a pro-military state and stuff too. It's really nice, so. It was a wonderful trip. I learned a lot, so, you know, I want to thank you. So do we have any questions or? I know I speak fast.
Sounds like an awful lot of red tape. I'd see if that comes along with, uh, the veterans seeking services from your office.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there was no shortage of that.
Oh, yes, yeah, they're dealing with insurance agencies and sometimes with the medical facilities or, or looking over, you know, what, what's the definition of, of this veteran for this certain benefit, because sometimes it can vary, you know? Whether it's one day in service or to complete your eight-year obligation and stuff, so you got to kind of navigate it, but I guess that was, justifies my job, so.
Well, thank you so much for, uh, what you do for our community, and we're very proud that you were able to, I think you were able to attend that, uh, conference in Washington DC.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate the update.
Yep, I appreciate the, you allowing me to go and stuff, so.
Yep, thank you. Kevin?
Yes. I don't have too much to discuss today, but, uh, we got quite a few more of our summer maintenance contracts in. The list there, we have to add, uh, the city of Devils Lake, North Creel, and Prospect Townships. Those came in after I had a chance to make all this. So. Yep.
That was okay.
I'm looking for a motion to have the auditor and the chairman sign those, uh, summer maintenance contracts.
I will some more. I will second.
We have a motion and a second that the chairman and auditor sign the summer maintenance contracts for the Highway Department and the townships. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
So the only one we have left now is Sullivan Township. We have the rest of them in. And the only other thing I have to bring up is more of a heads up. This is the time of year when we replace all of our broken glass and our trucks and our motor grates and for whatever reason, we had quite a bit this year, so it might, I don't have a estimate what it's going to be, but it might go over $2,500, so that's just a heads up for now.
Okay. Appreciate that. All the roads in good spring operating?
The standard answer is yes.
Yeah. Well, I've mentioned this to you before and I'll reiterate, uh, those comments is that we very much appreciate all of you and your staff's hard work throughout this trying, difficult winter season. Uh, thank, thank you and your, uh, your crew for the work that they've done and, uh, and keeping the complaints to a minimum. So we really appreciate you guys. Thank you. Anything else?
No, not for now. I think we're gonna, I'm not looking to buy a bigger snow blower, but I haven't started looking at prices yet, so when I get prices put together, I'll let you know where we're at.
Okay.
You know, I, I too would like to thank Jason, even though a lot of us don't like Facebook and all, but he put some posts out there for, uh, act of action when he was out in the snow and, you know, showing people what it was like and say, you know, to help people stay home and all that kind of stuff. You know what? That, that hit a spot with a lot of people.
Good?
Yeah, it did.
We, you know, we could probably go ahead and mention that, that if you don't need to be on county or township roads, uh, this time of year, um, please stay off them, you know, the maintenance is incredibly expensive and time-consuming and difficult to get done. So these roads are soft and squishy and wet and, and if we don't need to travel on them, let's try to stay away from those if we could. So certainly appreciate that cooperation from the public.
Yep. Those limits aren't done yet, but I see it coming soon. Maybe even this week yet.
Look on their page, you already said Benson County puts on.
Yeah, Benson does jump the gun, I mean, that's typical for them.
More follow the South of 200 or something.
Yep.
South of 200 and creeping its way up.
Yep, South of 200 is all on now, and everything west of the Red Sea is all on now, so.
Won't be long.
Okay.
So. Anything else for Kevin? Again, thank you. Any other old business? Nothing's listed. Uh, new business, do we have a raffle permit to approve?
I will move to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the raffle permit. Any further discussion? I think it's for Chukis Ferry Alumni Association, correct?
Correct.
Yep. My computer's being slow. All those, uh, in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Raffle permit is approved. Audiovisual discussion, uh, this is something that I asked to be put on the agenda for tonight. Steve Moore was good enough to get, uh, a gentleman up from ABI Company out of Bismarck to come take a look at our meeting rooms within the courthouse to perhaps improve the sound, uh, video capabilities that we're, uh, delivering, whether it be our commission meetings or others that we host within the building. So there's the commission meeting room, the big meeting room in the basement, the historical room in the basement, and then the armory over in the memorial building. And, uh, Mr. Butts, uh, came through, looked everything over with, uh, myself, um, Steve Moore, Chris Jaeger, um, Roger was there for a portion of the meeting, John Anderson, our, uh, building supervisor. And, uh, so we kind of took a look and he took measurements and, uh, And so we kind of took a look, and he took measurements, and some pictures and videos of the rooms, and we kind of, and he asked him to give us some options of what we could do and enhance our our quality of what we're putting out there for the public. So just wanted to make everybody aware of what we're, how we're doing, and why we're doing it.
I think that'd be very useful.
Well, I've had the people that have watched our our previous meetings, our commission meetings, and said sometimes they could hear, "Commissioner's okay," not always, but sometimes, and sometimes the audience gets blurred, and and difficult time hearing the audience, or who in the audience is actually talking? So which is, so we're going to have maybe a couple different options that they're going to present to make that possible, whether it be through teams or what have you, so be a a good positive thing for the county to take a look at. Anybody have any questions on that? Steve, do you have anything to add? Chris, anything? No? Lot of, lot of different capabilities out there, it just comes down to how much money do we want to spend? You know, because we can do a a whole wall of video screens and cameras, and but is that the best use of our dollars? Maybe not. So more to come on that later. Any visitors? Anybody online? Nothing? Sheriff Lang, anything?
Well, I've just reported that our computers came in and we're setting them up, so. Or maybe they got in here before the CAD system's ready to go up.
Oh, good. Glad to hear that. Chris?
Hope everything, hope the melt goes slow.
Hope the melt goes slow, and and so far, it's been pretty perfect.
Been really good.
Really nice. I know we'd all like warmer weather, but sometimes a slow and easy gradual increase in temperature is is better. Expecting snow later this week, hopefully it, hey, it doesn't happen, I'd rather have, but sometimes when you spread that moisture out with snow, it's, it doesn't rush the spring flood up any, so. With that, anything else?
I'd like to add that I went up and drove 20 up to Highway 9 yesterday, and then I went east over to Hampden, went north, and I took the county line over to 1. And when you drive north, when you get to Webster, you see that yourself up there, it's a whole different world with snow. And when you get the stark weather and east a couple miles, there's not hardly any, all the way to county or to Highway 1. And then likewise back, you know, most of the stuff up in that 17 north that direction, there's not going to be a lot of water at the present. There's a lot of running, but it's not going to be, because there's just the most snow left.
The mad dash like there was?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of culverts up there have opened up in the last few days, and.
Yeah.
Water's moving.
Well, the Weather Service, their their last, all look, look, still look like a, you know, 95% chance of a half a foot, with that 50% chance of going up a full foot from where we're at, so given the amount of moisture, or the amount of snow that we had, that's good. You know, any amount of of increase certainly hurts landowners who are trying to farm around the lake, and that's nothing, nothing new.
And we were lucky too, that we didn't have a deep frost this year, so.
Right.
We were a little more of this moisture soaked in.
Yeah, should make for, hopefully, a really good growing season.
Hopefully.
So, and we'll bring the, we'll knock down wood a couple times, so, yeah, so. With that, anything else? Comments from?
I'll just give you an update. A bid came in to the event center, fairgrounds. Had one was 3.7, one was 3.4, one was 2.8. I decided we accepted the little bid, but we're not going to start, we're not ready to start buying materials or breaking ground, we'll do some more fundraising, that's, that's the focus for the Fair Board and the Foundation. I don't know if Lindsay and the gals up at the extension were just teasing me or what, but May 1st, there's painting class out at the event center. They suggested I go, but Bill wants to go, he'd be more than welcome. And on the 28th, the library has a book sale, so.
Who cares?
You say they did accept the lawyer, paid the.
Well, they acknowledged it or whatever, but we're not, he's been informed that the money isn't there, so we're, he's willing to wait and see how things go down the road.
Lots of plus.
When he, or last Thursday or Friday, he got a call from the steel, or the building company said that Monday, the price of steel for that building was going up 8%, and he said, geez, you got to hold it till Friday, oh, we'll see what we can do. So that's why they had to be, they weren't going to accept, you know, they were going to wait for a little bit. And we decided, well, that's just going to be the cost of doing business, and instead of 2.8, we're just going to offer it as 3 million, so.
Our copper prices went down, that's why it's curious.
Well, he said everybody, I suppose it's building time, and.
Oh, sure.
You know, I don't know, that's.
Future orders, yeah.
So we're, I don't know if we're back to the drawing board, but we're pumping bricks, anything.
Good deal. Anything else? I would certainly like to take this opportunity to thank Paula Vistad, retiring executive director of Devils Light Chamber. Paula's been with the Chamber for a number of years, and I think Friday is her last day as executive director. And over the years, she's been a great promoter of our community and our businesses that are Chamber members, and been very positive for the Devils Light community. So publicly, Paula, if you're watching, thank you, and best of luck to Susie Kenner, tourism director, now taking double duty as executive director for the Devils Light Chamber, so publicly acknowledge that. And with that, if nothing else, meeting adjourned.